Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening on November 20th. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Thank you.
We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the Clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. At the request of staff, we are going to take up the closed session items on the special meeting agenda first, on item two, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Workers' Compensation, and number three, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Workers' Compensation. Before we convene into closed session, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on these items?
I have no public comment on the closed session items.
Thank you. Okay, well, we will meet back here shortly. Thank you. Welcome back to the special meeting. We will now move on to our study session, which will be our Art Exhibit Policy Review. It looks like we have a presentation from our city librarian, James Moore. James, are you online?
Yes, I'm here.
Good to see you.
Okay. It looks like, good to see you too, Madam Mayor. It looks like my, because my, because the host stopped my video. Oh, here we are. Okay. And will someone be changing the slides for me?
I see Martin nodding.
Okay, great. All right, so, we are here for study session for the city art exhibit policy. And as I said, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I am James Moore, City Librarian for the City of San Mateo. This evening, I will be presenting you with some helpful information to facilitate your study session for the city's review of the art exhibit policy. Next slide, please. So, the art exhibit policy has been in place since the new library opened in 2006. The main point of these policies is to provide transparent and clear guidelines for people wishing to understand how our art exhibit, city art exhibits work, for people, for staff needing to administrate those art exhibits, and for artists who are interested in participating in the city art program. The city has four art gallery spaces, two at the main library and two at City Hall. At each location, there is space for 2D art, paintings, et cetera, as well as 3D art, sculptures, other multi-dimensional works of art. Next slide, please. So why are we going, why are we proposing to amend the policy? We want to provide clarity. There was a need to provide clarity with regard to how our art display areas and galleries operate. We also wanted to make sure that the policy is up to date with best practices of our peer municipalities here in the Bay, as well as in, across the US. And we also wanted to clarify that the purpose of our art is to enrich the experience of visitors to our facilities. And we have to strike a balance in doing that, because those visitors have a wide range of diverse perspectives and sensibilities. Next slide, please. So, this is the first, this is the initial review or study session for the proposed amendments to the policy based on the work that we here at the city have done to, to improve and clarify our art policy. The amendments are based on a well-rounded gathering of perspective and insight from well-informed stakeholders. As you can see here, we got point, we got insight and perspective and feedback from community representatives, municipal leaders, as well as city leaders and city frontline staff. Next slide, please. So the main thing that we learned was, is, among the main things that we learned was that it certainly, it definitely is time for an update based on established policy review schedule. We needed to be more specific in clarifying what the purpose of, of city art gallery and display spaces is, the main purpose, and I'll get into that a little bit later. And we also realized that one of the purposes of the gallery, which is to explain clarity, particularly for staff administering the program or artists wishing to participate or community members, that there were some gaps in the procedures as far as explanation, and that we needed to be more explicit in filling in those gaps and explaining to people how the program actually works. Next slide, please. So, one moment. Let me screen. So, I want to go through our key recommendations, and hopefully this will be pretty swift, but I think these are the most important things for you all as a council to know, and of course, you can ask me any questions. So these are the key updates, I believe, from going through this process. Number one, to clarify in the, in the policy updates or amendments, that city art galleries are for city expression, and they are not public forums. They are meant to enrich the experience of visitors to city facilities, but unlike public forums, they are not spaces where every single viewpoint or expression is allowed. We, we wanted to, we, we took a number of steps to improve the accuracy as far as language of how the program actually works now. So for examples, the policy said that artists submitted requests for display, but the, the program has evolved to such, in such a way that the committee actually puts out a call for artists once a year. So, we needed to update that. The original policy said that artists must contact the coordinator within two weeks of being selected to confirm artworks for display, but artists are often now selected up to two years in advance. So for example, the artists who would display in 2024, 2025 are being selected now. So, there's no way they could let the coordinator know within three weeks which specific works of art they wish to display, because works of art will be sold off or not even created yet. So this was changed to show that, that the artist and the coordinator need to get together and confirm these details at least three weeks prior to display. The existing policy only requires the artist to submit a list of work selected by the artists themselves for display. The policy update specifies that city representatives will get to view and approve the specific works of art prior to display by getting a chance to look at representations or likenesses of the actual works of art that the artist wants to display, and that the advisory committee is recommending for display. The policy update also highlights that art expressing overt political messages is not allowed, specifically to avoid creating hostile work environment, as the city aims to reasonably accommodate the diverse sensibilities of the people who frequent city facilities. Policy updates also clarify now that all art recommended by the advisory committee and the art advisory coordinator must be viewed and approved by the city librarian and the city manager or his designated representative prior to display. Next slide, please. So, those are the key, those are the key recommended amendments, and the next step after, from this, after this point, is to receive your feedback and to answer any questions that you have about the policy amendments, to take further steps to incorporate any refinement that is needed based off of that feedback and direction from you all as a council. And ultimately, the city manager will update and approve the policy at a staff level after incorporating council direction. This concludes my presentation, and I am now open to any questions if you have it.
Thank you, City Librarian. Who would like to start with council questions? Deputy Mayor, please go ahead. Former Commissioner.
Yes, thank you very much, through the mayor. City Librarian, thank you very much, and yes, I remember discussing this when I was on the library board. Was there any thought when you were, you were putting this policy recommendation together about setting a timeframe as to when you will revisit it? Because I heard you say at the beginning of this presentation that this policy had not been reviewed for nearly two decades. Is there maybe some thought of, at least every five years, we want to take a look at this? What was your thinking?
Yeah, so actually, the policy hadn't been reviewed since 2011. I became City Librarian in 2019. When I took over, I learned that there, I was informed by my administrative, my executive administrative assistant, that there's a policy for the library to review all policies every five years, and that there were some policies needing review. We got on it right away. There are 14 library policies. We reviewed 10 of them during the last months of 2019. And then it was interrupted, of course, by the COVID pandemic. So, that left four policies that didn't get reviewed, as we all sort of spent the last three years just trying to get our bearings. This was among those. So, actually, this policy will not, the, the review process is occurring here with you all. So this policy will be moving from the library board and becoming a citywide policy. And so, at the end of this whole process, this policy will be taken care of, and then we'll have three more policies that the library board needs to review, and we are, we've already scheduled a time to review those over the next several, next two or three months, to have us completely up to speed, and have all 14 of our policies completely updated and on schedule.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Lauren.
Thank you, through the mayor. Thank you, James. Could you, would you mind, like, I, I'm going to attempt to walk through the, the process as I believe I read it through the, the policy, and I was just, I think I'd like to just ask if, if I got it right. It seems to me that, once a year, the art advisory committee will be inviting artists to apply, to exhibit their art, and then make, I guess, a, a number of selections based on, I guess, a sampling of their work. I think, I, I feel like I heard from you, they may not have all of the art that they plan to display at the time that the committee selects it, but this committee may make a number of recommendations to yourself and, and the city manager for upcoming exhibits. And I, I, in fact, maybe I'll just kind of stop near here and ask, at that time, do you and the city manager review some recommendations and then select who might exhibit on, on the schedule you were alluding to earlier?
Well, of course, this is, this is part of the discussion and has not been finalized, but as it, as it, as it is, the committee puts out a call for artists, usually from the summer to early spring, so from June until about October, artists have a chance to submit their works. Currently, after, so let me back up a little bit. Each artist gets an opportunity to display their works for eight weeks at each location. So, what that allows for is two artists to be, being displayed at the library while two artists are being displayed at City Hall for eight weeks, and then they switch for eight weeks. For the whole year, that allows for 12 artists to be displayed on the whole. The way the program has been operating is that, once the artists are selected, then the, based on a sampling of their work, then the committee would allow the artists to select their best work, or what they think is their best work amongst what they have available for display. And obviously, this has worked well for a while, but it did, it definitely, obviously, had some issues or had some holes in it. So what will be proposed now is that the, once the artist is selected, based on the quality of their work as considered by the art advisory committee, when we get to the point where they are actually imminently about to display, about three weeks before, they will be expected to present the art advisory committee led by the art coordinator, art display coordinator, who is a library staff person, with the 12 works of art that they, that they recommend displaying, or they will go through their artwork with the committee and give them sort of a, a selection of art. And then a committee could select 12 items that they want to recommend to me. And then, once it is recommended to me, I think the process would be for me to look through those and make sure that they are fitting with our requirements and our standards, and then ultimately to consult with the city manager before the final decision is made on what will go up on the walls. So, maybe we should spell this out in the policy? That's a good question. But the way it is now, once the artist is selected, they will be contacted three weeks before their time is near to, to have their work displayed, and that's when the actual works of art will be selected by the advisory committee led by the coordinator, and then their recommendations will be presented to me for my consultation with the city manager and final signing off on, on those recommendations, or a recommendation that some of those works of art not be displayed.
Okay, thank you, and yeah, if, if, if the committee selects an artist, that artist works with the coordinator to produce the final list of artwork and, and shares it with you and the, and the city manager, if, if at that time, there are some works that you and/or the city manager doesn't he find to be outside of the policy, could you, at that time, perhaps ask the artist to simply, if, if they have another piece of art to replace those particular pieces with?
Yes, that is my understanding at this point. If, if artists is selected and, and decided that their art is of high quality, then they will be given an option if we decide that a particular piece of art does not fit our needs or our standards for displaying in a municipal space, that artist will be given a reasonable time to put forth other options.
Thank you, and what would happen if a, if a city employee believed that art that did get finally approved and displayed in either City Hall or the library were, were still offensive or contributing to what they believed to be a hostile work environment?
Good question. I believe that the city manager or the city attorney are, are best positioned to respond to that question.
Thank you, Councilmember Lauren. So ultimately, it would be up to me as the city manager to handle this, but I would be working with the city attorney, the city librarian, and really take into consideration the information that we have and review the complaint in question in light of the, the rules that we have established, and also look at the legal parameters to everything too, before we actually make a final determination and decision.
Okay, and I imagine if, if it were an employee who were bringing forth this complaint, that employee might know that you're the city manager and perhaps bring it to your attention directly, or they might bring it to James's attention or, or something, but if it were a, a member of the public, do, do you have a sense of how that?
It would be, so typically, if someone has an issue, they know exactly how to contact us or find a way to contact us, and so once we're notified, we would do the same exact thing.
Okay, and one last question is, will we, will Diego, Marcelo, Rios, and others who were displayed earlier before a decision was made by the city to, to discontinue the, the exhibit for some time, get another opportunity to display their work?
Absolutely. I think that any artist who wishes to participate and be part of our program, that we would take that into consideration as long as they follow the rules of our policy.
I guess I'd like to have a little follow-up, because, James, you mentioned you are already taking, it sounds like the committee may already be taking applications for 2024 or 25. Would, would there be an opportunity to bring forth the, this last year's artists to the, to the front of the line, or how, how might that work out?
So, going into the detail, oh, go ahead, James.
Oh, yeah, you know, I can, I can shed some light on that. So, there were a group of artists who, there are 29 applicants in the queue right now who met the deadline, and we just informed them that we needed them to sit tight while we worked through this, this policy discussion and worked out the proper amendments. But they're in the queue, they're, they're, they haven't lost the opportunity for consideration, and as soon as the policy is updated, they will be considered. Now, I do think there is a question about, you know, some of the artists who had their works up for display and had to take their artworks down when we decided to pause the program, but I see no reason why they, why we could not go back to them and say, let's figure out how to get your artwork back up, because none of their work was in question or anything like that. I do not know exactly how a, a discussion of if Mr. Rios's artwork, other artworks, other pieces of art would, would go up. That's, that's not a, a question that I, I feel qualified to answer at this point.
Is that a question the city manager might be interested in addressing at this point?
So as long as the art follows the policy that is written, then I should, we should see no problem with displaying art.
Thank you, no further questions.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Hedges.
I have one simple question and later a suggestion. Who's going to place the art on display?
According to the existing policy, as well as the amended policy, once an artist is selected and notified that they will have the opportunity to display their art, they are responsible for transporting their art and putting it up for display at our different locations. Because these are typically experienced and established artists, they, they, they know how to use the, either the hanging system that we have or the, the display cases, and if the artists need assistance with that, of course, we have staff members who would assist them in setting up the art at, at city facilities. But they typically are primarily responsible for that, but I think if I understand your question correctly, that I think at this point, yeah, we probably will have a staff person there with them, or at least immediately after they put the art up for display, just to make sure that, that they are indeed displaying the works of art that have been approved by the city representatives.
I think that's very important to have somebody to check it, because we never know what might happen.
I, I agree with you.
Through the mayor. Hi, James, thanks for your presentation. I guess my only other follow-up would be, you know, art is very subjective. If someone came forward and said they believe that this, you know, there's symbology or there's something in it that has an undertone or underlying message, do we have a process, or will this process include a way to review, review that? That's my question. Thanks.
Well, right now, right now, the, the, right now, the response to that would be that ultimately, the city manager would go through a process of consulting with the, with me, consulting with the city attorney, perhaps other city leaders who may have some insight on this, and, and perhaps city staff such as our coordinator, and use his best judgment, because this is a subjective issue, and use his best judgment to decide whether or not, you know, and how to respond to that. So right now, that is, that is, that is the plan.
Thank you. I, I'm curious to learn more about the makeup of the art advisory committee. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a Brown Act committee, it's appointed by the library board or the lib, city librarian? How is, how do, how do members, what is the current composition of the committee? How long have, how many committee members do we have? How long have they served on the committee? What are our efforts to diversify that body? And has that, has the diversity been tracked as part of our, our Boarding Commission demographic
All very, all very good questions, Honorable Mayor. So, the committee is not, not, it's an advisory committee that is not considered a Brown Act Board or Committee. It is considered, at this point, to be volunteers or library volunteers. The committee is made up of, is led by a representative of the library staff who handles all of our displays and artworks. There is also another library staff member who is on the committee, but she has been inactive for a while. And then beyond that, the other members of the committee are a couple educators, CSM. I don't have a list right in front of me, but I know that there was a member of the committee who was also the art maven for the San Francisco Chronicle, and an, and an actual artist. So at present, I believe there are six members made up of art educators, city staff, and actual artists. Now, with regard to your question about the diversity of the committee, I don't believe that question has come up until, until we started reviewing the policy. The members of the committee, because it is a volunteer, volunteer committee, up until this point, there had not been any time limits set, and in my consultations with the committee coordinator, she said that the committee had sort of, just always sort of turned over every two or three years organically, because people sort of fall off, and then, in which case, there were people that were recommended based on staff or based on members of the committee, and traditionally, the city librarian would And traditionally, the city librarian would simply review those people's credentials, maybe meet with them, and make a choice. Now, this is something I've never participated in, because since I've been here, the committee has been pretty steady. A couple of people have fallen off, but they haven't really added any new members. And the reason I know about the choice being made by the city librarian was that we did our research. So now, as part of the amended, one of the specific questions that I asked the art committee coordinator was, if there is not a time limit, how do we assure that the committee doesn't become stagnant or doesn't just become a parade of people who know people who are already part of the committee? And as you, I'm sure, are concerned about, it's just people who are already well-established and sort of have opportunities that others are seeking. She felt that that could be addressed by simply adding more committee members. One of the things that we have put forth in the amended policy, or at least have discussed, is possibly aligning the limitations of service on the committee, art committee, to line up with our boards and commissions, although it's not officially a board or commission, so that a committee member could serve to, up to two four-year, up to two four-year terms. So that is, that is a way that we're proposing to limit the amount of time that a person could be on the committee in order to make it, I guess, more, a more fluid situation and provide opportunities for people who traditionally had it, been a part of it. As far as formal steps to make the committee more proactively diverse, more proactively inclusive, I think we have work to do on that and probably could use some guidance. Because I think when the committee was formed, those sort of considerations were not explicitly discussed.
Thank you for being so forthcoming. And would it be appropriate in this policy to better elaborate our intention to have more, more established guidelines, clearer guidelines for term limits, for example, for an expanded membership body, for an explicit call to, you know, bolster our outreach with the goal of getting more equitable representation? Is that where this, this policy, is that where we have an opportunity to do that tonight in this policy? I'm seeing a shaking head. Okay, great. Okay, so that is, those are my questions. Let's open up for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you intend to speak on this item and you're attending remote, please raise your hands at this time. And I have three speaker slips, and we're doing three minutes on this item. And the first speaker is Diego Rios. Come on up.
Hi, guys.
Welcome.
I'm the guy that caused all this controversy. How about that? I'm just nice with the old man. Heaven forbid. Thank you very much for listening today and taking the time to listen to me today. My name is Diego Marcial Rios. I am an artist. I have been a practicing artist for nearly 40 to 50 years. I've had nearly 500 exhibitions from Japan to Bulgaria. I'm in numerous museum collections, in fact, so many, my daughter has to collect them all. I don't even remember how many at this point. I am the artist who created this controversy, believe it or not. Created a controversy that led to the San Mateo County staff removing three artists who were on display. Yes, I caused a controversy, this nice little old man here, who is very talkative, I must say. Something that I should say, and this is a little bit of a recommendation, I'm requesting to be on the selection committee to help select artists who are going to be applying to your program. I have numerous art degrees and that sort of stuff. I have plenty of education. I think I have two master's degrees and an undergraduate degree from UC Berkeley. I also have a law background and that sort of stuff. So I just offer to volunteer my services in terms of selection, because I don't think quite the selection committee has enough, I hate to say it, they don't have enough professionalism in the committee, and that's not quite their problem. They really need to gather more volunteers and more professionalism. Another matter I have to bring up is, I have to ask for an apology. I believe I was treated very rudely throughout this process. Again, I've been showing art for many, many, many years, in many different places, in many different museums, and working with even many different governments in terms of showing my artwork and publishing my artwork. I've never been dealt with so rudely. I had to find out that my art was taken down by Fox News. A Fox News reporter said, hey, Diego, guess what? They took down your artwork. And I told myself, Fox News? What am I, I don't want to talk to you guys. They told me that my artwork was abruptly taken down. And in the process, I mean, I remember hearing a little bit about that there was some problems with my artwork, but I said, I suggested, I even contacted whoever was on the art committee back, whoever was taking charge of the art. I said, I offered to switch out the artwork. I mean, I do that all the time. I'm a political artist. No, my artwork was just rudely taken off. And I found out nonetheless by Fox News that it was taken off. And I think I deserve something of an apology. I don't know who was in charge there or whatever. Not only do I deserve an apology, I think those two other artists who did not produce political artwork are entitled to an apology. I mean, come on, you can't be treating artists like this all the time. I mean, look what's happened. I mean, articles have gone everywhere, from London to UPI to ABC, you name it, because of this matters happened. It could have all been avoided if there would have been a little more communication, and I would have been dealt with a lot more politely. I think that that's very important, to deal with your artworks a lot more politely. Now, this nice gentleman here mentioned whether or not I'd want to re-show my artwork with you guys. Are you crazy? I'd never work with you guys again. I was not dealt with professionally or kindly at any time, and I would never deal with your agency again. In fact, I'll tell the other artists that I know of, don't work with San Mateo County, okay? These guys are rude. They're terrible, and they're crazy and unprofessional. So you're asking me about whether or not I'd ever work with you guys again? Of course not.
I'm sorry, Diego, your time is up.
Time is up? Well, thank you very much for your time and your attention, and well, maybe that's a, taking some suggestions, and maybe you think about next time you work with an artist. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Rick Sakuta.
Can I have a minute just to address the council and thank them for their service?
Go ahead. You have the three minutes, Rick.
What, I'm sorry?
You have the three minutes.
I have to do within that?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for your service. Let me start over then. I'll email you, but I recognize your service and your sacrifices. On July 20th, I asked formally two questions about this incident, and I think that I will, rather than rehash it, take it up with Alex, with your consent, rather than rehash it here. But I wanted to say that, please ask yourself with any other group that were targeted, how would you respond if this was anti-Semitic, anti-Muslim, anti-gay, anti-black, white, yellow, brown? What would you do? Would you respond immediately, or would you wait 125 days and still not have addressed it? I think that's wrong. And whenever you have targets, you have victims. What are those victims feeling? What have they been feeling for 125 days? And Mayor Lee, you know very well, Asian people were targeted, and who came to our support? So we have to look at what the effect is on our police department. They're the blue. They're targeted. So I think we owe our police officers an apology. I think you all know that the biggest challenge facing our city is not flooding, it's retaining and recruiting people. So how do you retain and recruit people when you have art that disparages them at City Hall? Now, I recognize that none of you had anything to do with this and no one knew about it, but there should have been a response immediately, correcting that and recognizing that. And at this time, 125 days hence, I'm asking the council to discuss this and draft a letter of apology to our men and women that serve us in the police department. I think that's more than fair, and I would ask you to do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Michael Reagan.
Good evening. Just a quick thing. I actually sent a letter from the Beresford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association to the police department, you know, with what happened with the art that was put up. But this is, I don't think it's going to be as easy a decision as you guys think about the luxury of traveling around a few places and seeing a lot of art. And the art that kind of excites me or gets me going the most is sometimes the most disturbing. I was just in Japan and went to Hiroshima and saw something that just, I'm still thinking about. And so, the difficult part you're going to have is, if we have, it seems like you have all these committees that are going to look at this and look at that, and whether this is going to be okay and that's going to be okay. You know, the definition of art is sometimes a difficult thing to explain. It's one's perspective. And if we're going to have so many people deciding what we can see, what can't see, I mean, I don't mind seeing things that are disturbing if they get you thinking, but and art can be a personal, it's extremely personal from what these people are putting out. So my point is, if the city isn't able to, you know, have that ability to display these types of art, maybe we shouldn't do it. And maybe we should do it in a different, you know, in a different way than putting it in our, in our public buildings and that type of thing. If we're constantly, as you said, we may have an employee that doesn't like a piece and we have to take it down. I don't think there's too many artists that are going to want to be under that pressure that everything they put up is pretty and beautiful and everybody likes it. That's not art. So this, my personal opinion, and good luck with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no other speakers.
Thank you so much. Who would like to begin with providing some feedback? We're reviewing the draft art exhibit policy and providing feedback and direction. Who would like to begin? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Through the mayor. I think this is a great start. It definitely involved a lot of people and a lot of discussion, and I think it's worthy of implementing. The only suggested amendment, I would say, is to be explicit about when we're going to go back and review the policy, partially because art is a often-moving thing and just to learn as we go along. So maybe every, every year, there should be a review. But I think this is a good start. I also appreciate the comments that you made about trying to really look at who is involved in making these decisions and making sure we have a more diverse community. And I would leave that to the city librarian and city manager to make recommendations on. Thank you.
Councilmember Hedges.
I also like all the comments I've heard. I've only got a couple of things. I think first and foremost, we got into this situation because nobody was reviewing what was actually chosen to go up on the wall. So I think it's very important, as I said in questioning earlier, that we have specific people who view the art that's going on the wall, make sure what was approved is posted. I think that's a must, and I didn't see that anywhere in here. The other thing is just a very small edit, and I'm not one to usually edit, but in the second paragraph on policy, solely for city speech, I think it should say solely for the city of San Mateo's speech, because these incidents, when they occur, is always viewed, and I've even heard it stated, the city put it up, so they must be agreeing with it. So I think we need that change, slight change. It's not a big deal, but I think it's important to identify what city we're talking about. That's what I have for now. I may have something later. Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor. I appreciate the public comments and questions brought up by my fellow council members and some of the comments so far. I think my first comment is that I, I believe there's room to add a bit more language to this policy that could make it a bit clearer. I would also maybe recommend having a bit more of a chronological approach, perhaps with the Artist Submitment Requirements section. I think on a high level, I felt like this was a little difficult to follow. After reading through it, I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me, for example, there's a paragraph that says, is the, referring to an art gallery exhibitor agreement, and I wasn't sure if that is the same document as a, quote, "final list of works to be shown along with images or representations of all the specific art to be displayed." It might be, but it might be a separate document. It wasn't super clear to me how local is local when we're talking about prioritizing local artists. And I think I noticed the, one of the key pieces that has been added here about three weeks prior to the exhibition date the artists must submit the works is, in number five of this Artist Submitment Requirements, and it can be missed if one's not careful. So I just, through the lens of somebody, you know, a potential artist or somebody who might be interested in what is our policy and how does one apply and so forth, I think it could be a little clearer. Getting more to the matter at hand, I mean, I think I respect that these spaces have more than one role to play. They are not, you know, just art galleries. They're also, they also happen to be within our library and City Hall, in which city employees work and in which members of the community move about and engage with city facilities and services. So I think because of that, I can accept the idea of this being a forum for city speech as opposed to, or rather, an exhibit and gallery for city speech as opposed to a public I, you know, I would have, you know, I would like to see the artists who had their work displayed and taken down be given an opportunity to be, to apply sooner rather than later. It sounds like we won't get, we may not get Mr. Rios to do it, but perhaps the other ones are interested. And so, I appreciate earlier discussion that seemed to indicate that will be possible. I think this is certainly an unfortunate situation that came to light because we may not have had an airtight policy that perhaps hadn't been reviewed as often as we might like to review policies. So I appreciate the discussion about considering something of a review more regularly. I also did appreciate the mayor's comments about the art selection committee and how it can be brought into the broader grouping of boards and commissions. I would say maybe, you know, all of the different bodies of volunteers we have in our city. I guess my only concern would be, there are, I guess, like the Civic Arts Committee comes to mind. I think, I'm not sure if doing so would necessarily require us to make it a Brown Act body. If not, you know, I think the general ideas behind the mayor's comments are ones I can get behind, and I just wouldn't want to see it become so onerous, for example, or that others who are currently part of it might not want to be a part of it anymore or something to that effect. But with regard to an apology, I sort of feel that... But, um, yeah, with regard to an apology, I, I, I sort of feel, uh, that our interim city manager made a statement, um, when making the decision to put the gallery on hiatus. I, I do feel that was a response, um, in, in support of our police. So it's not as though nothing was done this whole time. That said, you know, I, I guess, I, I would be interested in hearing what other council members have to say regarding, uh, future statements, and I may or may not be able to support them. But, thank you.
Through the mayor. Thanks. I don't have much to add other than, you know, I would, I, I guess, a question that I have for city staff is, what other non-Brown Act body commissions do we have, if any?
We have the Investment Advisory Committee, which is put together through the Finance Department, and the city manager actually appoints to that. And they're looking for specialized financial skills to be able to advise on that committee. The Civic Arts Committee does operate as a Brown Act committee, um, but they also, um, there is some interest in actually looking at the composition there and if some improvements could be made, including term limits for that committee also. So that's something we'll probably bring forward when we're looking at our boards and commission rules and procedures.
Sure. I would, I would be in support of, even though they're not Brown Act body commissions, having the same sort of rules and structure apply, uh, they should be coming, and they should be coming to our, our party once a year, too. I mean, we should really get involved and know who they are, I mean, as opposed to just being the obscure person in the back room judging art. So, uh, that's, that's my thoughts on that. Obviously, I would like to see a more diverse, uh, group of people making these decisions, uh, if that's what's appropriate. Uh, as far as an apology, I, I, I believe that our police are pretty thick-skinned. Uh, I think the acts that we took of taking down the artwork right away and making a statement is probably significant, but if the police feel that they need more, then I would be open to hearing from that and potentially looking into that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Through the mayor, if I could quickly say, this is now one of the citywide policies. It's not, um, just in a department. So what that means is in 2015, the, um, the city actively took to re, redo all of our policies, to put it into a new template, uh, to repeal some. City Council took action on that. We changed the approval process, and now we have regular reviews of citywide policies, so we never get that far behind again. So this will roll into that approval and review process, just FYI.
Please, go ahead.
I forgot one more. The only other thought I had was, in some of these, like an art selection committee, that could also potentially be an opportunity for youth, um, youth commissioners as well, where we don't have any now. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, great points. I was, I'm really happy to hear support for, um, for doubling down on our efforts to diversify all of our advi, community advisory committees, um, especially ones that will have a role in this program. So I, you know, I really appreciate support from council on that. And, um, and I would agree that, you know, if we don't, if, if they're not Brown Act of bodies, then it makes it all the easier for young people to participate in those kinds of, um, committee structures. So, um, so I would love to see our outreach extended to young people as well and make sure that we have, um, all voices at the table. They might not have art degrees, but they have important perspectives. And, um, and I, I am very satisfied with the, um, with what our city clerk described in terms of the review process for a citywide policy. I do not see a need to, um, to add any additional review timelines, and so I, I wanted to make sure that we're clear on, on that. Um, if we're providing direction, I see nodding heads. Great. Um, and, um, you know, and, and I think that, um, you know, this, this effort, cleaning up this process, clarifying our own process in response to, um, you know, to, to the realization that there were breakdowns, and the fact that it has come to us as fast as it has, is, I think, a testament to our city being very proactive. And, um, and, and so, you know, I personally, you know, I, I look to art to be provocative and inspiring, um, and, um, and also, I recognize that the art that I want, seek out in my personal life is, is different and should be different than, um, than city speech. And, um, and I appreciate the mechanisms that we're putting into place, um, providing checks, uh, with our, with our city, um, manager and our, and our city librarian. Um, our city manager is a, you know, is hired and supervised and fired by, by this body. And so there is a high level of accountability that is put, baked into this new process that, um, that I can stand behind. Uh, and, and so, you know, I see these corrections as, you know, certainly in, um, in the right direction. I see the effort to, um, to fold them into a more formalized, um, cadence for review as, um, you know, quite appropriate. And, and we are iterative, as always, and responsive to community. And so I know that, you know, if, um, if we need to revisit this on a more expedited timeline, then that will happen. So, you know, I, I think that this is a good example of us, um, being responsive to community and certainly showing respect to our city employees. And I know that many of us, including myself individually, reached out to, um, our police chief and our, um, our public safety officers specifically to express our support. And so, um, I know that many efforts were made, um, that might not have been, you know, vis, you know, internally within the organization that didn't necessarily have the visibility, um, of, you know, across the board. So that doesn't mean it didn't happen. It certainly did happen. So I'm, uh, with that, I think we can...
May I say something?
Yes.
I really appreciate what the mayor said. I think she summed it up very well. Uh, the one thing that I would say, I would be very willing to do a letter of apology, a very short one, to the police department for what occurred, because it was a failure of oversight.
Okay, do we have a direction?
I have direction, but just on the last item about the letter, I saw nodding heads, but of a couple. Two, three. Okay, done. We got direction. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, that looks like we've wrapped up our study session, and we'll meet back here at seven o'clock. Thank you.